Council meeting of February 2, 2023 to order. Before we do the pledge, I'd like us to take a moment of silence for tragedy in Memphis and some more mass shootings. That was appropriate. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Ms. Zembo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Kuzick.
Present.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Here.
Ms. Serinski.
Here.
All present, Mr. Myers by phone.
Thank you. Take a motion to approve the minutes of January 5, 2023, and January 19, 2023. Moved by Ms. Vargo Heffner, second by Mr. Tom. Okay. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Now, we have courtesy of the floor. I have two names signed in. First is Joe Coonan from Easton. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Okay. You come on up. If you would introduce yourself and your municipality for the clerk, and you have five minutes then.
Also have some brochures as well.
If you want to give them to the young woman over in the corner.
So, my name is Joe Coonan. I currently own two Cricket wirelesses, one in the municipality of Easton, the other in the Washington township between Bangor and Penargel. So, apart from providing the cheapest mobile rates in the industry for premium coverage off of AT&amp;T's network, we are also able to apply the federal Affordable Connectivity Program to our customers' accounts and save them $30 a month on their monthly bills. As a result, some of our customers are getting unlimited data on their plans for as low as $17.25 a month, with certain customers getting free phone lines with data. Customers are also eligible for free phones when they stop into our locations. The qualifier for ACP programs is food stamps, so SNAP, Medicaid, WIC, the Veterans Pension Program, and other programs such as that. It's done through the county, and currently it's being sent to like Qlink and SafeLink and other programs that are, they don't have like physical locations, so customers are having issues with those programs. So, they get the free phone, they never actually use the devices. While with Cricket, they can get like a normal, like a phone plan, like a regular phone plan, non-contract, month to month, save some money. And obviously, you know, the Affordable Connectivity Program, which is funded by the US government, pays for it on their behalf. So unfortunately, people don't really know about this program or that this program can work with regular cellphone providers. So, that's something that we've been trying to work on is to spread the word. We've been going to food banks. We've partnered up with the local church up in Penargel. We're partnering up with, I believe it's called the Shiloh Church in Easton. So, we're really trying to, you know, put the footwork in any way we can. We have Bethany Ministries that's over in Copley?
Bethlehem.
Bethlehem? But the location I'm working with is in Copley as well, so, and we're just trying to, you know, really get out there and help out the community, save some money. So basically, for people who do qualify for this program, we're able to give them a free phone service and a free phone, which we pay for, and just try to, you know, make sure that we can get as many customers in this constituency to, you know, get that $30 credit because it will run out in a few years, and people who don't get it, they won't be able to receive it. So, that's basically all I got to say, and if there's any questions, comments, or any advice, I know you gave me a little piece of advice right before the meeting as well. Thank you very much for that. Be happy to hear it.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Next, we'll, I have Joe Welch. If you would identify yourself again.
Sure. Good evening, Commissioners. You're Commissioners now, right? So, Joe Welch, Executive Director, Lehigh Valley Justice Institute. I reside in Easton. Our, the institute's, the institute's office is in Bethlehem, the Northampton County office. I came here tonight to tell you about a really exciting event that we're going to be hosting in conjunction with Northampton Community College, and I gave everybody a flyer about the event. It's a reentry simulation, and what it does is allow participants to essentially walk a mile in the shoes of the residents of the county jail, going back into their communities, and the tasks that they need to accomplish and the roadblocks that can occur as they're trying to accomplish those tasks. This is a, this is a simulation which is put on by a group called Franklin Together, which are the Franklin County Reentry Committee. They've done it in various places throughout the state, and this past summer, they did it at the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania meeting, and your colleague from Lehigh County, Commissioner Bob Elbick, attended that simulation and participated in it. And the next time that I saw him, he said to me, "You've got to get these people here to do this." He was, he was so impressed by the, by the quality of the simulation they put on. This is going to be done at the Community College in the Lipken Theater Lobby. It's, it's a program that's part of the annual Peace and Justice Conference, which the Community College puts on, and also this year, that conference is part of a week-long series of events commemorating the inauguration of Dr. Eric Ruth as the new president. So, there's going to be a lot going on at NAC, and a lot of people are going to be there. We're interested in inviting, as participants, judges, magisterial district judges, court personnel, and elected officials, including all of you, and we'll be sending out an email in the next few days with a link to register for the conference. It's, the way it works is, they lead you through four weeks of reentry that are 15 minutes each, and in those 15 minutes, you have five tasks to accomplish, which you do by going to various tables around the perimeter of the room. And as you perform those tasks, things can happen, like you get a flat tire and never make it to your parole officer's meeting. You can have a hot urine pop-up. All kinds of things can happen along the way. We think it, on an emotional level, gets across some of the obstacles that people face, and rather than my description, since I haven't done the simulation, I'd like to just tell you a little bit about what Commissioner Elbick had to say at last week's Lehigh County Commissioners' meeting. He said that he had an intellectual understanding of all the issues people face in reentry, but doing the simulation for him was absolutely a life-changing experience in terms of perception and understanding what the challenges are. He said he would encourage any elected official, and particularly those who are involved and make decisions related to criminal justice and reentry, to participate. He even suggested maybe it should be mandatory. As he said, just to go through it, to have a sense of what's involved, and the legislation which we put forward, which can create a lot of obstacles, all well-intended legislation, but end up with, with consequences that are unexpected and unfortunate in many cases, and that he highly recommended the simulation. So, as I said, we will be sending out an email to everyone with a link to register and, and also to County Executive McClure, and we'll have Mr. Dirtinger in there too, see if he violates parole. And, and I hope you can find it in your schedule to attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes the sign-up portion of courtesy of the floor. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to approach counsel under courtesy of the floor? All right. Seeing none, since I'm running the meeting tonight, we got, received a letter from a citizen, and has been the practice, if they request it, be read under courtesy of the floor, that we have done that in the past. So, it falls on me to read it, and I shall do that now. This is dated 1/24/23. Counsel President, please read this out loud at the next count, courtesy of the floor. I am unable to attend to health reasons. Stop the Employee Health Center. Government has no business meddling in occupational medicine or healthcare as a whole. The last thing taxpayers need is another government expansion that pledges to save money but never does. Government cannot be all things to all people in an endless spiral of expansion. Big government prototypes like Mr. McClure likes to package government expansions as a savings to the taxpayer. We know these tricks and, and traps all too well. If you want to save taxpayers' money, trim your workforce to match the private sector where everyone is doing the job of three people. What's better is reducing the sheriff's staff by utilizing the much less expensive state constable for courtroom and courthouse security and prisoner transport. I project that savings would be greater than a health center. Regards, Tricia Mezacappa, West Easton, Executive Director, Stop Secrecy PA. All right. So, there, I fulfilled my duty. I have no other letters or anybody asking for courtesy, so we'll close courtesy of the floor at this time. And County Executive Report. Mr. McClure, do you have a report?
I do, sir. Thank you. Tricia must have not got the tax cut. Tonight, we are going to, am I done?
That's not true. That's, that's, that's your timer.
I thought, you're tough.
It's a tough crowd. It's a tough crowd. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So, during the Human Services meeting and courtesy of the floor, I talked about our Fake is Real Fentanyl Awareness Campaign, and I wanted to just repeat the website, fakeisreal.org, so that people who are watching us on YouTube, who are watching this later, can go to that website, check it out, and begin the process of helping communicate to the 18- to 35-year-old demographic that this campaign is aimed towards, to have them appreciate that their pills 4 and 10 are currently adulterated, for drugs you buy on the street adulterated with fentanyl, can kill you, and we really need to get that information across. When we came into office, we encountered in the prison a closed section of the prison, the D-tier section, and we realized that that needed to be renovated because we had prisoners who, and you'll hear from Mr. Castora a little bit in my presentation, but we had prisoners who have mental health issues, who can't be locked up all day long. They need to move around a little bit, and there's just nowhere else for them to go. They have committed a crime, they have been convicted, and they have been sentenced to a period of time to serve that sentence, and there's nowhere else for them to go. So, we realized immediately that we had to do something about this. It was just unacceptable to have a part of our prison closed. So, we took about doing this. And so, this is D-tier renovations, and this, these are the, some of the pre-construction conditions. There's some photos of the pre-construction. And remember, this is closed when I arrive here as County Executive because it's unsafe for people to be, for residents to be housed here. And you can see some of the, some of the deteriorating conditions there. You can see here, some of the oxidation, that's really prevalent, and frankly, the section was closed because it was a danger to life and limb. You can see that. And here are some before and after comparisons of the construction, and you can see it's pretty profound. Here's an outside view of the tier, before and after. Here's a before and an after comparison. Again, some more D-tier renovations, before and after. This looks to be bathroom facilities. And here's some progress photos from March to April 2022. Some more progress. September 22. October 22. January 23. Coming along. And that is the end of our photos now. So, you can see the final, you see that. It looks great, and the final walkthrough is going to be, I believe, tomorrow morning, right, Mike?
Yes.
9:30. The final walkthrough with construction will take place tomorrow. So, we're, we're really pleased to be able to tell you this, and before I bring up Mr. Castora to explain how this is all going to work in NCP, I just wanted to indicate to you that the repairs are projected to come in at 3.91 million. The original cost was projected to be 3.56 million. Almost all of the additional costs, 334,000, was due to the lead paint and asbestos remediation. This was not in the original scope and had to be budgeted for separately, you may recall. If you exclude the remediation, so, you know, you can't have lead paint and asbestos, that's just not conducive to good health. If you exclude the remediation costs, we'll come in about $18,000, 0.5% over the original contract, 0.5%. This is a stunning success for a project of this magnitude when you consider that it's in a prison, and that has its own additional challenges. So, we're really pleased about that, and it should be noted that this project was done under our responsible contractor ordinance. So, we're really very pleased with yet another major construction project in Northampton County coming in under the RCO in pretty good shape. Mr. Castora, if you could come up and give counsel the plan for how D-tier is going to be used and how that affects the other tiers, including how it's going to affect our folks who unfortunately are residents of NCP and also have mental illness.
Thanks. Well, finally, it's been.
For the sake of the audience, could you just identify your.
Sure. I apologize. Jim Castora, Director of Corrections, Northampton County Prison. It's been approximately a little over five years since this building, this section of the building, D-tier, has been opened. Again, it was explained by Mr. McClure. It's time to get ready and open it up. We need the section of the building. Reason being is we're going to be jockeying a few of the other tiers around to help our mental health, and that's really what this is about. This unit here is going to be, as you can see, is going to be an open bay, an open-tier unit. This is going to house our workers, our in-house workers inside the institution. Low-level residents, low-level custody, security residents are going to be housed in this area. And what this does is, once this section here is filled up, it relieves some of the other tiers, and we can jockey on over and move over our mental health folks that we've been trying to do for quite a while. They need out time, they need better conditions, and this opens it up for them to be out and about inside one of the units that's safe and secure for them. And where they're housed now is not really conducive to some of the treatment that they're going through. They need to be out and about. So, moving the tiers does open this up for us, and it helps us immensely, and it's a 36-man unit over in D-tier, and it started out in the '70s as a little history, B and D-tier. There was an upper level and lower level, and of course, that's been removed since then. It's one floor right now. So, that's what we're looking for, and it's going to be an open area. So, is there any questions on anything?
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Castora or, and/or the executive? I have a question, Ms. Castora. I see the configuration. So, these are open. Now, they're, they're going to be, I assume there's bunk, a bunk or bunks?
Correct.
Per, per unit, I'll say.
Correct.
How many per unit? How many bunks?
Four per unit.
And it's open?
And it's open. It'll be an open bay. It'll be open.
Okay. And that would then house the, you mentioned the.
The low-level security risk inmates that are in-house workers. They're basically in preparation for, their next step would be work release, going over the community corrections.
Now, you, you mentioned mental health as well. Is that something you're looking to add, or is this something that is going to, this is going to be mental health?
Moving the residents over to this unit will free up one of the other existing tiers that's been prepared for mental health, and we can put them there.
Got it.
Sorry if I didn't explain that a little bit better.
That's fine. I just wanted to be clear. The, when do you anticipate that you, this will be used, you'll be moving people in?
Very good question. I'm looking for tomorrow, going through the punch list with Mr. Millie, and then we're going to make a better decision from there.
Would it be, excuse me, if a council member would like to take a look, walk through, would it be possible for them to contact your office and maybe get a chance to walk through?
Absolutely.
What was accomplished?
Yes.
Very good. All right. Oh, that was it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Vargo Heffner has a question.
So, are we no longer using West Easton as the work release program, and we're not going to fill that back up again? They're going to be housed in this unit?
This, this unit here is just for in-house workers. They are not cleared for work release, community corrections on the outside.
So, will you be reopening the West Easton facility?
Eventually, yes, we will be opening that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, either the executive or Mr. Castora? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. and.
So, I'm not done. So, sticking with NCP, we have, of course, ended our emergence, COVID-19 emergency, long ago, and we now know that President Biden is going to make an announcement on or about May 11th, ending the national COVID-19 emergency, and that has caused us to accelerate our plans. I suspect, without being specifically briefed, that they're choosing May 11th because they want to get through cold and flu season to make sure that there are no spikes, and I think that's incredibly prudent on their part because we are still in the heart of cold and flu season, and as you heard from Ms. Stuart King parenthetically, that they still have flu and COVID at Gracemonte. So, we know that that is, that's a possibility. But sticking with the NCP and the lifting of the national emergency on May 11th, we are making plans and have been making plans to open up NCP to visitation. We started a pilot project during the week of Thanksgiving allowing visitation, and Mr. Castora and I agreed, along with Prime Care Medical, that we would monitor what would happen after we opened up for visitation that week and see what kind of COVID we might find. And since then, we've seen maybe one pop, so we did it over Thanksgiving. We did it over Christmas. We had a visitation week through the New Year. We're about to Valentine's Week, have another week of visitation, and then St. Patrick's Week, we're going to have St. Patrick's Day Week, we're going to have another week of visitation, we're going to monitor to see what happens with COVID. And then around the time that the President is anticipated to lift the national emergency, we will begin to fully bring everyone back, including visitation. It's time, and we're going to do that, and we'll bring all of our providers who are not coming in back by then when the, when the national emergency ends. And to get to Ms. Vargo Heffner's question, it is our intention, around the same time of the lifting of the national emergency, that we will also reopen the West Easton facility for work release-eligible offenders, and we're working out the protocols for safety there now, and we have plenty of time to do that. And one of the reasons we do, and I just really wanted to laud Mr. Castora and his, the warden and the entire staff there, just today, Northampton County Prison has reported that they have held 63 vaccination clinics, 63 in the prison, providing 978 inmates with vaccinations and another 78 with boosters. Currently, 277 inmates in the facility are fully vaccinated, and 41 have received at least one booster. 25 staff received a vaccination or booster shot. Shots for inmates and staff are administered by Prime Care Medical. Of course, the vaccinations are not compulsory and are provided to those who request them, and they have just done a terrific job with that, and they've done a terrific job with their COVID protocols controlling COVID. So, recently, Mr. Gofredo and I have been in a private dialogue about the policy requiring vaccinations for new hires in Northampton County, and at this point, it's, I think, an excellent time to discuss in public why we did what we did and what the plan is going forward for vaccinations to be required for new hires in Northampton County, especially in light of President Biden's determination to lift the national vaccine mandate sometime around May 11th. So, there are really two reasons why on, and let me get the date correct. December 22, 2021, I issued in the form of a policy with respect to vaccination. That, that's not the right date. There's a, my apologies. I will get the correct date. That date was 12/1/21. I was looking at a different policy. I'm sorry. 12/1/21. The reason we did that, and the title of that policy, which could always be found in the Northampton County Employee Policy Manual, was entitled "New Hire COVID Vaccination Policy." And the reason we did that was, there were two fronts. One, up until that point, we had not had any employees die from COVID-19. There was a real moral imperative on our part to make sure that nobody died from COVID-19 who was in our employ, and if you survey our neighboring counties, almost none of them can say that. And we were, we were desperate to make sure that we preserved that record. So, that was the moral imperative that we had in issuing the new hire COVID vaccination policy, which was 3.606-T, and again, found in, can find in the Employee Policy Manual, and the T is for temporary, because it was, because it was always meant to be temporary. The second reason was we have spent, and this is a good reason, by the way, to have a partnership health center, but we have spent $1.3 million on COVID hospitalizations, $1.3 million on COVID hospitalizations. Now, here's some good news on that front. In researching our, our employees and their spouses and dependents' COVID hospitalizations, what I saw was none went on a ventilator. That was really good news, and some were in ICU, but the majority did not have to go into ICU. So. So I was really pleased to see that as well. But it did, in fact, cost us $1.3 million to have the folks who got COVID and got so sick they needed medical care to go to the hospital. But with the determination by the president and the federal government that the national emergency is going to end, the justification for us continuing our temporary policy is, I think, less, on less solid ground. Although legally, we would be fine. The Supreme Court has upheld these mandates every time they've been challenged. And I think it would be most appropriate, when the federal government ends the national emergency, we will end our New Hire COVID Vaccination Policy. Of course, Gracemonte is not affected by that. Gracemonte is, Gracemonte will continue to follow the federal government's edicts with respect to vaccination policies. That's all I have on that. Any questions?
Yeah, any, any questions for the executive on, on this topic specifically? Just a question, Ms. McClure. I listened to the president's, I heard, you know, I was watching with the president and what you alluded to. And I know that they're going to stop. They want people to be aware they're going to have to go to their insurance now. I don't know if that corresponds with the May date, but that you'll no longer be getting free, getting free testing kits or getting free. And I, with our system that we were using for the public, which I think was a big benefit for the population at large, are we, are we going to be going by those guidelines? Or as far as testing or getting a shot?
I think there's a two-part answer to that. I think we need to discuss with our third-party administrator capital exactly what will be covered. But I believe for our employees and their dependents, most of these things will be covered by insurance. I believe that to be the case. But let me confirm with them that they think that's going to be the case. And of course, we're self-insured, so we can determine what it is we want to pay for and not. But I, I think those things will be covered. With respect to your point about testing outside for folks who aren't county employees, we still have some money left for that purpose. And my intention is to exhaust that money for those purposes.
I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on the public testing part. And I just wondered, given what is coming out of Washington, I know they're, they're going to stop probably a flow when they have some of this money and funding regarding COVID. So I was just curious where we were. So whether there were no other questions or any council members on this issue topic? All right. Did you have more?
I do, just a little bit. You may have heard that the World Heritage Designation is proceeding. And we've been put on the national list in the serial nomination. There are still more steps to go, but this was a huge hurdle to overcome. And I was speaking with Mr. Barnett today, and he wants to come back in the very near future with Ms. Donchus Mowers to give us a briefing. But here's the bottom line. They are not this far along the process without us, without the county of Northampton. They just don't get to where they are, and they're not going to get to where they're going without us and the commitment we've made. And you should be very proud of that fact. And finally, I saw and I want to thank you for acknowledging the prerogative of the administration to have its proposals put on the agenda, that you have the Health Center resolution on your agenda. Thank you. But I'm going to announce tonight that tomorrow, an RFP for a health center is going to issue. And that will follow the processes, although I don't believe I have to. We'll follow the processes of Article 13, and we'll have something for you, hopefully, you know, within a couple of months to vote on. Should be unanimous. That's, now I'm done.
All right. Well, any questions for the executive on any or all? Mr. JP, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm assuming your RFP is pretty much written up and ready to be sent out?
Yes.
So is there, is there, have you guys talked at all or had any conversations as far as basing the fee that whatever health company comes in to run this? There, you know, because obviously, the big selling point is this is going to save the county money. And if we could base their fee on their savings that they provide us, that would be a real, you know, safety net for us here, sitting on council, guaranteeing us that they're going to be motivated in every which way to make money because that's how they're going to make their money, saving us money.
Well, I think there's two problems. I don't think anybody would bid under those circumstances because they would have to front.
They would have to actually mean what they say.
Well, no, they, no, they would have, they would have to front all those startup costs. And I'm not sure anybody would do that. But, but potentially, potentially in the interviews, we could explore that.
I would love to see that. Really would.
See, all right.
Mr. Myers, did you have a question?
No.
All right. Anything else at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We will now go on to the agenda. As councils are aware, we're going to be covering some things from the last non-meeting, which we couldn't do. And as was expressed, our apologies to the public for that. So first, under old business, is a vote on the ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Easton, Pennsylvania to Lease Approximately 2,400 Rentable Square Feet of Space at 31C West First Street, Wind Gap, Pennsylvania, from Joseph de Pue." Misses Brown and Giovanni introduced this ordinance at the January 5th meeting, and the public, and the public hearing is held, was held on the January 19th, but we're holding it again tonight. Is there anyone from the ordinance, anyone from the public who would like to address this ordinance? Seeing none, close that, and it'll go to our discussion. Anyone on council want to have a discuss this? All right. Ms. Zembow, call for the vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, under old business, we have consideration of county executives' appointments, reappointments to authorities, boards, and commissions. Ms. Vargo Hefner, would you introduce the resolution?
Resolved by the Northampton County Council that the following individuals shall be confirmed in their appointments, reappointments as indicated hereafter. Conservation District, Appointment Farmer Director Richard DeFebbo from Bangor, Pennsylvania, term to expire 12/31/27. Reappointment Farmer Director Joel Geiger from Danielsville, Pennsylvania, term to expire 12/31/26. Drug and Alcohol Advisory Board, Appointment Jordan Westerman, Bath, Pennsylvania, term to expire 6/30/25. Jail Advisory Board, Christopher Hess, Easton, PA, term to expire 12/31/24. Lehigh Northampton Airport Authority, Appointment Ann Baum, Bethlehem, PA, term to expire 12/31/28. Reappointment Glenn Reedman, Easton, PA, term to expire 12/31/28. Lehigh and Northampton Transportation Authority, Iris Laneras, Bethlehem, PA, term to expire 3/31/28. Lehigh Valley Planning Commission, Appointment Council Liaison Tara Zarinski, term to expire 12/31/23. Mental Health Early Intervention and Developmental Programs Advisory Board, Donna Thorman, Nazareth, PA, expiration 1/23/26. Parks Recreation and Open Space Advisory Board, Paul Ricciardi, Bethlehem, PA, term to, and Clyde Thomas, Bethlehem, PA, terms to expire in 3/19/25. That is all.
Thank you. Are there any, are any of the people who were mentioned here tonight? I certainly want to introduce you if you are. And to those who may have been here at the last meeting we were scheduled to have, and you couldn't make it tonight again, I apologize. Are there any questions or discussion regarding any of these names? Again, I want to say thank you to people who do this. We certainly appreciate your volunteer service. All right, discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. Ms. Zembow.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
All right. Next, under old business, we have consideration of a personnel request from the District Attorney's Office Resolution. Ms. Vargo Hefner, would you introduce the resolution?
It is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of clerical technician, three, pay grade CR-15, salary $31,167, shall be eliminated in the District Attorney's Office effective January 20th, 2023. It is further resolved by the Northampton County Council that one full-time position of the clerical specialist, pay grade CR-17, salary $34,174, shall be created in the District Attorney's Office effective January 20th, 2023. Mr. How could not be here tonight, but we did review this in Personnel Committee last month.
Discussion among the council. Seeing none. Ms. Zembow, would you call a roll?
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Is there any other old business for council to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. And I beg your indulgence in me reading this. Introduction of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordnance by Northampton County Council Concurring with the City of Bethlehem, Lower Salkin Township, Salkin Valley School District, and the Bethlehem Area School District, and Providing for Property Tax Exemption for Certain Deteriorated Property as Defined in Ordnance Number 2022-14 of the City of Bethlehem, Pursuant to Act 76 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania as Amended 72 PS 4722." It's secretary? And Act 42 of 1977 of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, as amended 72 PS 4711-101, and agreeing with the Article 343 of the Codified Ordinances entitled "Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance - Southside Lurda District 2." Is there a sponsor for the ordinance?
I will.
Ms. Vargo Hefner, a second? Mr. Lot? All right. The public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the February 16th, 2023 meeting. Next on the agenda, consideration of a proposal to, to engage integrity health for a partnership health center resolution. And as you know, there's, there's been many discussions, and there was a resolution forwarded to council. Mr. Spinoni, though, would like to make a statement before any action is taken regarding this resolution. Mr. Spinoni.
I'd like to report that Commissioner Lot, at the last meeting, asked me to prepare an opinion, which I did. And I think that that speaks for itself as to, there's remarks that were made tonight as to Article 1310 with the RFP. So I think we're at a point where great minds think alike. So that's all I had to say. I had much more to say if there, if that wasn't the case, but certainly, the memorandum speaks for itself.
At this time, since it is an existing resolution that's sort of floating there, I, I'd like to ask if there's a motion to either introduce this particular resolution or table the resolution at this time. You've all seen the resolution. Is there a motion for either or?
We're doing a RFP?
A motion to table has been made. Is there a second, Ms. Hefner? No discussion. Ms. Zembow, call for the vote.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Zarinski? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
No.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to two.
Thank you. And, and let me be clear. This was on this specific resolution at this time and based on what the executive said. I think by no means does this mean it's an end to this discussion or possible vote. So anyway, next, we have consideration of County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania Priorities Resolution. Ms. Vargo Hefner, would you please introduce the resolution since you are now a big shot at C cap?
Fill in Mr. Kuzik's shoes. A resolution of the County of Northampton Commonwealth of Pennsylvania supporting the 2023 priorities of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. Whereas Pennsylvania counties have selected six priority issues that will be the focal point of county's proactive agenda for 2023. Whereas these priorities showcase county's commitment to the core services they provide to the people and communities of Pennsylvania. Whereas achieving these county priorities underscores the critical need to redefine, reinvigorate, and emphasize the state-county partnership and service delivery. Whereas the top priority for Pennsylvania counties in 2023 is securing 911 funding and reauthorization. And whereas the current 911 funding formula is scheduled to sunset in January 2024, and the new 911 funding formula must adequately support current county needs and must also ensure that funding sources and distribution support our needs into the future, including planning, development, and support for the implementation of next-gen 911. And whereas achieving this priority would ensure all Pennsylvania residents and visitors will continue to have quick and efficient connection to a 911 operator and services in any situation, regardless of geographic location or time of day. And whereas county's second priority is addressing county inmates with mental health issues aiming to find ways to better serve those incarcerated experiencing several mental illnesses and making it very difficult to address their needs in the jail setting. And whereas county's third priority is advocating for county mental health-based funding increase to ensure that residents are able to access the care that they need. And whereas counties provide community-based mental health services such as community residential programs, family-based support, outpatient care, and crisis intervention, which are critical to the well-being of our constituents and our communities. And whereas Northampton County has invested in community-based mental health services that coordinate and invest in programs and services that meet the needs and challenges of local communities. And whereas addressing the needs of children and youth who have complex behavioral health issues is county's fourth priority to provide adequate support to county's mental health-based funds to better ensure services to address children's mental health needs are available within their communities. And whereas counties chose broadband access and development as their fifth priority in light of the immediate need for infrastructure and partnerships critical to expanding access that will increase economic vitality and personal quality of life. And whereas counties continue to seek to promote election integrity, including expanded pre-canvassing time and moving back the mail-in ballot application deadline to 15 days before an election. And whereas the state-county partnership across all areas of service delivery must again be prioritized, including a commitment to additional and sustainable funding for all human services and county-administered programs. Now, it is hereby resolved that Northampton County stands ready to work with the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania and counties throughout the Commonwealth in support of these priorities for 2023. It is further resolved that these priorities emphasize the important role Northampton County plays in improving our communities and the well-being of our residents. It is further resolved that Northampton County calls upon the General Assembly and the administration to work together in partnership with counties to jointly determine the most effective ways to continue meeting the needs of Pennsylvanians. It is further resolved that collaboration between county government and the Commonwealth on these priorities will lead to solutions that improve stewardship of the taxpayer dollars, reduce costs, increase local flexibility, and assure the quality of services county, counties provide. It is further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Northampton County Legislative Delegation, to Governor Shapiro, and to the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania.
Very good. Any discussion? Mr. Kuzik?
Yeah, a couple of comments on this. First, I'm-
I think it, and it's mentioned about the baseline. We've had additional funding, but it's never been as part of the baseline, so it's difficult to budget. So that's important. But the one thing I wanted to really bring to the attention, particularly of our Harrisburg delegation, is the paragraph regarding election integrity. It says, "including expanded precanvassing time and moving back the mail-in ballot application deadline to 15 days before an election." Now, this has been CCAP's position for, since mail-in balloting was adopted. And I saw an article recently that State Senator Boscola introduced a bevy of legislative ideas. We just want two, okay? And if she would find it in her heart to introduce a bill with just these two items, she would have the backing of CCAP and county commissioners across the state. So rather than just throwing everything at the wall and seeing what sticks, I would urge her to craft a bill just with these two items so that our organization can get behind it and lobby for it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or discussions? I'd echo that, that we have a county, we have a governor now who was a county commissioner. And as I alluded to earlier, the Human Service Committee meeting, we have a director of human services who was also a county commissioner in the same county. So maybe we'll see if there's some carryover from their county days. Hope, I hope you're right, Mr. Kuzik, I hope you're right. All right, any other discussion? If not, oh.
Just to state that last week, the Commissioners Board did lobby in Harrisburg and met with several folks to try to push this, these priorities, and was met with a positive reception. And I agree with what Mr. Kuzik said. I think people are looking to define that precanvassing and are looking for something that's just very clear and specific and not all over the place. And while there may be some that are in opposition, it seems like the majority are looking to just move forward and define things and get it done, so. And also, I think the state senate leader is also a former commissioner as well. So that speaks well to understanding county's priorities.
Anything else? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Sarinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any other new business to discuss by any county council members? I just want to state that my new business is partially old business. I want to publicly send out my anniversary wishes to my wife. Tomorrow is our anniversary, it's our 50th wedding anniversary. And to paraphrase a line I heard in a movie once, at least I got one thing right in my life. And I'm very happy, but it's primarily all been her, so God bless her. But anyway, so there, that's my greedy moment for the night. Are there council committee reports?
No, go ahead.
Ms. Sarinski?
The Economic Development Committee met today, and we had two presentations. The first was regarding the Bethlehem South Side to Lurda. It is a request for a five-year expansion on what was representative of 15% or 225 acres of the current Lurda, and this is already zoned industrial. And we're just trying to create more economic development in the area and extend that Lurda for those businesses and promote more. The second presentation was regarding the Wilson Dixie Cup property, and friend Armando did a survey of 121 respondents with the results talking about the most requested use as community facilities or some sort of residential or mixed use. So it was a very interesting Economic Development Committee meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other committee meeting, committee meeting? Yes.
Human Services met prior to this meeting this evening. We had an update on Gracdale, also an update on several outstanding projects. The long-term residence is on the brink of hopefully getting a certificate of occupancy, maybe within the next month. The other thing is that our long-awaited desire to be released from the civil service system to hire children and youth workers may be also completed within the next few weeks so that we will be able to be more expedient in hiring folks to serve in those positions.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none. Any council liaison reports? Oh, Ms. Sarinski?
So on the 25th of January, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission Environmental Committee met, and it, there was a presentation done by Maria Benzoni and Diane Matthews Geringer from both farmland preservation directors in the respective counties. They talked about that we are losing farmland at a rate of two acres per minute. This seems insane to me, and I think that our farmland preservation is very important. We are going to continue to preserve farmland, obviously in this county. And also, there are several municipalities that have an EIT, earned income tax, that goes specifically to purchase, acquisition, farmland, and preserve it. And several of these are just areas that are so beautiful to us. We miss Township, Bushkill Township, Moore Township, East Allen, Lower Mount Bethel, Upper Mount Bethel. Also, at that meeting, we voted on, or we put forward the Penarge Borough Stormwater Ordinance update, as well as reviewed an application for the Nazareth wastewater treatment. It's going to be 1.18 million gallons per day, and it's, they're trying to get the renewal to modify the disinfection used to, they used to use chlorine, now they're using ultraviolet light. I found that interesting, too. And that's what's going on basically in our county. Thank you.
Any other liaison reports? Council clerk report?
Nothing.
Council solicitor report?
Nothing.
I have a question for the solicitor. You did send out that opinion to every council member.
I did.
And you shared it with the executive?
I believe that I spoke with.
For the solicitor.
Elaine, and she delivered it to the county executive.
Okay.
I did not ship it to him.
All right, I was just curious if they got to see the, all right, fair enough. I just, question. All right, if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Aye.
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 Aye.